We're going to continue on with our presentations.
Start back at the beginning.
We're going to, it's 1:09. We're still in the boards and commission room here on August 29, 2019. We're going to go back to the beginning and begin with an overview of the hotel occupancy tax.
Good afternoon. Carla Stefan, Austin Convention Center. I am going to jump right in. We're going to start with an overview of the hotel tax as it is presented currently in the city manager's proposed budget. That total of hotel tax is $101.8 million. 70.2 million of it is coming from this seven cents assessment under chapter 351. You can see in the middle column there how the 70.2 million is distributed among the four uses. The Austin Convention Center, Tourism and Promotion, Cultural Arts and Historic Preservation. Cultural Arts and Historic Preservation are funded at the 15% state maximum. In that blue column, you can also see where we are supplementing the funding to visit Austin through the convention center with the $9.9 million that's flowing through our budget. And then the right-hand column again shows just summarizes the uses within those categories that I think we're all very familiar with.
And to be clear, the tourism promotion is 4.5 plus 9.9.
Correct.
So the totals aren't actually listed on the chart.
Correct.
Thanks.
But as you may recall, earlier this month, council did approve an additional two cents of hotel tax. So this chart represents the effect of that. If you, if you recall, that two cents is for proposed convention center expansion. So that top line shows the additional amount that we'll be collecting this year as a result of that. The other change, though, that you see is, as it stated in the ordinance that council passed, we will be funding Cultural Arts and Historic Preservation through the convention center for the additional 15% of that two cents. So those amounts are shown in the blue column there, the $3.1 million for each of those purposes. The final piece of the hotel tax is again the two cents that's currently being collected under chapter 334. So this just shows you that that amount expected for fiscal year 2020 is at $22.6 million. So as a result of this, and Ed can correct me if I'm wrong, I think staff will be bringing forward a budget amendment for council to consider and approve to adjust the hotel tax accordingly based on the two cents. And you'll be doing that during budget adoption. That is correct. So after you take that action, if you do approve that amendment, the total hotel tax for fiscal year 2020 will be at $122.8 million projected. This is just a snapshot of the growth of hotel tax that we've seen. Shows you the last four years of actual hotel tax. Again, what we're estimating to collect during this current year, fiscal year 2019. And then what we're projecting will be collected in each of the next five years. And you can see how we layered in the additional two cents for fiscal year 2020. We do remain quite conservative in our estimates going forward, but if you do the math on this slide, it does show that we're projecting in fiscal year 2024 to collect over, just over $140 million in hotel tax. And I will end with kind of the discussion of our capital fund. So in addition to kind of just the overall interest in hotel tax, this continues to be another interest of council. If you remember, we created the capital fund as part of the operating budget in fiscal year 2018 in an effort to provide more transparency of this particular funding. This, this chart doesn't already incorporate the additional two cents that will come through the budget amendment. That's on the, the third line. This represents the amount that would have normally been accounted for in our capital improvement project funds. So we have been using this funding to cash fund capital improvement projects at both the convention center and then Palmer Event Center. But this is also where we have been setting aside the funds that we've been very strategic in planning for the proposed expansion. So the top three lines at the end of fiscal year 2020, the total amount projected in this fund would be $135.5 million. Those top three lines combined are the funds that both are for ongoing capital needs of the convention center, but also the funding that we've been setting aside in preparation for the proposed expansion. I believe there's been some interest in trying to see this particular subset of funding in a historical perspective as well. And I can tell you because this fund was created in FY '18 and only fully funded in FY '19, I couldn't, that information is not at my fingertips to pull together for today. We are going back through our capital improvement fund balances and pulling that information together. So we should have that to council within the next week. We'll have kind of display it in the same manner year over year. And with that, I will turn it over to Solnovia. She's going to walk through cultural arts and historic in a little bit more detail and then we'll be available for questions.
Thank you, Carla. Solnovia Holt, Rab Economic Development. The cultural arts funding program was established in 1995, again, to promote, encourage, and improve the arts, including expenditures for administrative costs. This chart shows a five-year historical picture showing that the expenditures have increased. And the expenditures are done in accordance with guideline-specific programs such as core, community initiatives, cultural festivals, and tempo, just to name a few. The cultural arts program has seen tremendous growth over the last 10 years. But as a snapshot in time, five years, you can see that we have gone from 375 contracts up to projected of 623 in next year's budget. As a result of the outgrowth of the number of contracts discussions in the fall of 2018, staff along with the arts commission are in a review process along with partnership of community organizations to determine how we will move forward with the cultural arts program due to the tremendous growth of this program. We're in the second phase of a five-phase process and we hope to bring recommendations back to council in the spring of 2020. The second program that is managed by economic development, of course, is the Historic Preservation Fund. And it is, again, as Carla stated, fully funded for the promotion of tourism through preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation of city historic properties. Per your resolution that you passed, we are funding those programs in accordance to the resolution of 70% set aside for the City of Austin Historic Facilities, 15% for future purchases of property, and 15% for the Heritage Grant Program. On September 19th, we will be bringing forth the recommendations of the properties that we're recommending for funding in FY '20. As looking out for the next four years, we will again continue to follow along that resolution of 70% for city facilities, 15% for heritage grant, and 15% for future purchases. EDD is working with internal partners to fully vet a list that could possibly take us out three to five years with properties. We want to make sure that the properties meet the requirements and are part of the matrix process so that we fully vet these projects. And we will be bringing back a final list. It may not be in detail per year, but comprehensive of the projects that we could move forward in the next three to five years. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Anne?
I apologize. I stepped in just as you were talking about what my one question was, which is the, and did I hear you right that what I was interested in seeing was projects, a projection of projects over the next, I guess, five years or so to use the hot tax funding for the 15% in the historic. So we'll get that in time for the budget. Is that correct?
Well, definitely in time for the budget, you will get the FY '20 recommendations that we are bringing forth that have been vetted through a matrix process. It's in your packet as an appendix also, the list of projects for FY '20.
But what about the projection? I really, the reason that it's important to see the projection is just so that I understand if I don't see something on this year, I can know that it's, that it's being considered for the future years.
Yes, we will get, we can get you a list of total projects. It may not be specific like FY '21, '22, but definitely projects that are on the list under consideration.
Okay, and then you said this, but just so I understand, so when will you have the projection by year?
We are working internally with our departments to finalize. Some have costs, some don't. Again, we want to run them through the matrix. Are they shovel-ready? Do they fit within the criteria, et cetera? So hopefully by the end of October, we'll have that list.
Okay, thank you. I just want to express a bit of concern just because that's something we've been asking for, for a while. And so if it's possible, if you could at least, when you give us the list of, of, did you call them eligible, is that what? When you give us that whole list, if you could please sort it in whatever way you possibly can to give us an idea of roughly what year we're thinking of, understanding it's not a final matrix.
Exactly. It won't
Can you do that?
Yes, we can do that, but with the caveat, it won't be final until we run it through that matrix process.
Okay. City manager, I, we had asked for this over a year ago. I had expected it to be done by now. So I'm happy to hear that, that we're going to have it now. And if I could just have some understanding of the general order of magnitude. Is it one year out? Is it five year out? Is it nowhere near ready? That would be really helpful. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Natasha.
Yes, I just had a question about the selection process for the capital improvement projects. How were they selected?
So we met internally as a department team with our various departments, PAR, Planning and Zoning, all of those that submitted projects. And we ran them through a matrix. Are they shovel-ready? The amount of budget, the timeframe it would take to complete the projects, and vetted it with our law department to make sure that it met the criteria. And so that was the process we did for the internal capital projects.
Awesome, thank you. Can I ask, were there any projects in East Austin that were considered?
Not for the capital projects for this year, but under the grant program, we anticipate that there will be three projects coming forth through the Heritage Grant Program. Thank you.
Okay, Allison, then Kathy.
Thank you. There seems to be a discrepancy in the amounts between the chart that says there's 11.9 for the historic preservation and then the amount somewhere else that says it should be 12 point something or other, 12.2. Is that difference the amount that goes into the general fund pieces that are being covered? Because there, it seems like we have over 12 million that's going to cultural, but only 11.9 to historic and they're both supposed to be 15%. And I'm just having trouble understanding that. And I saw that in here as well and I was trying to understand what caused that.
So both the cultural arts fund and the historic preservation fund receive 1.05 cents or the maximum. In the cultural arts fund, we have ending balance that we are bringing forward to increase the expenditures.
And we have no balance from the historic preservation?
So there is a balance projected in the Historic Preservation Fund for this year. We are projecting approximately $5.5 million at the end of the FY '20 in the Historic Preservation Fund. And we will consider that when we bring forth projects again next year.
Not, I'm having a little trouble following. We're not, we had $5 million we didn't spend this year. And that's not going to be brought forward until next year rather than now?
As of this time, because of the vetting process that we have gone through, some projects are not quite shovel-ready. And so when we bring forth the list, if there's a desire, that could be an option. But again, it runs through a process to make sure it's shovel-ready, et cetera.
So, so I had, I had understood that we were in this budget allocating the amount that was going to historic preservation, but not voting on individual projects because we didn't have the full plan. And now I'm seeing that we have specific projects that are outlined. But like Anne and like Natasha, you know, there are projects from my district that I've been waiting to have funding that I'm told are in the plan, but I haven't seen the plan and it makes it difficult to make these decisions. And then to know we have $5 million that we haven't spent. These are not very expensive projects that I'm talking about. And, you know, it's hard to understand the trade-offs here that we're looking at.
Right, but as per the resolution, we were to bring you back the full list that we're recommending in FY '20. And so that's what you will see September 19th. Also, there is a line item for future purchases within the budget that council can give us direction on.
So that's what you're just saying, so September 19th is post-budget. So then in this budget, we are, I'm very happy to vote that we have this much money for historic preservation. What I'm not sure that I have the information for is to vote on which projects. And now you're saying that we're voting on those projects on September 19th? I'm just not understanding the process.
So that, I'm sorry. The budget that we will bring forward includes all the transfers to the historic, heritage, Historic Preservation Fund and the cultural arts funds per council resolutions, but it's not the list of projects? We will come back to council for approval of the list of projects. We included it in the appendix here because there was a budget question pertaining to what are the projects we anticipate funding in FY '20? That information is already out there. We're just including it here as, I think these would be the list of projects we anticipate bringing back to you on, on September 19th for approval. But these, these projects won't be approved in your budget action on September 10th.
Okay, then on, for September 19th, will we have a better sense of that five-year plan?
We will, we will try to do our best between now and budget approval to get you that list.
Okay, and then will we also know for the heritage grants that are going to the non-city properties or being funneled through non-city planning processes, will we have
You will also have that list.
Information as well? And that was the list that you were referring to, that you said that there were, there were projects in East Austin?
Right, we are administratively working through the process to finalize those contracts and we will have the list by Wednesday. We will have that final list.
Okay. So I'm still not, can you tell me again the answer to the question of the discrepancy in the amount?
Maybe I can help. At the time we prepare, so at the time we were preparing fiscal 2020's budget, we are only using what we are estimating to be brought in for fiscal year 19. So normally and hopefully, by the end of fiscal 19, we have more that we've collected than we even estimated. So the, there is a almost two-year lag before anything that you collect over and above what you've estimated can be then included in a proposed budget. That is why cultural arts, which has a history of funding, has this rolling ending balance that's rolling into the next year's appropriations. Historic Preservation Fund will get there eventually, but because this is the second or third year of this funding, it's just taking time. But it will, it will eventually be in that same cycle. So I believe it was last year when council did a mid-year budget amendment to spend some of the excess that had accumulated in cultural arts and it was because of that very reason. We had been collecting over and above what we were estimating, but because of the timing of when we need to bring the budget to council, we just don't know those numbers at that time.
So we will see a rollover from historic preservation funds from the last two years that we haven't spent. And then there will be a recalibration that will begin starting for hotel occupancy tax receipts that were higher
Correct.
than originally anticipated that will also go into that fund, none of which we're allocating in this budget process on September 10th. We will be making some decisions on some payments out of that on September 19th. And we will have more information on the five-year plan and the heritage grants that are going to non-city folks at that time?
Correct.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Kathy.
First of all, I just want to thank you so much for the presentation. I'd requested it and I apologize that I think I might have been the reason that you had to shift your times here today. So thank you so much for that and I apologize if that was necessary. I wanted to just say while we're on the subject of the, of the balances in the different cultural arts fund and historic preservation fund, I, I hope that, you know, when, when I brought forward the suggested allocations and did so in consultation with staff and community members and others, it was always with the understanding that there may be times where we need to make shifts. You know, if we had a really significant historic property that we were trying to acquire, for example, it probably would take more than we allocate in a current year's cycle. And so I think having, having a little cushion in that, in the Historic Preservation Fund allows us a little bit more flexibility in our acquisitions. And, and it may even be the case if we're purchasing it for city use, which would be the likeliest scenario, that we would want to, you know, that we might need in a given year to tap into that 70% for City of Austin facilities to use for acquisition. I think one of the things that happened with our allocations that were in the city ordinance is that, you know, they almost took on kind of a life of their own. And I don't think, it took us a while to figure out that those were just changes we could make in a given council meeting. And so, you know, I just want to, I just want to be clear. I think these are the right allocations, but the area we have not funded well in this, in this 70, 15, 15 was acquisition. And so I just want to put in a measure for that because I'm hoping, I'm hoping we will have good reason to have a conversation about how to use, how to use our acquisition funds for a historically significant property that would meet the qualifications. Okay, and then let's see, the cultural arts five-year funding. So I just want to go back to page nine for a minute. So in here, you know, as we look at cultural arts funding, and I'm trying to imagine what we would have had in the historic preservation funding had we been funding that at 15%. And so I think, I know that I could compile this from past budget years, but it would be helpful to see what the exact amounts are. Is that already somewhere in one of my budget documents from this year?
The exact revenue brought in?
Yeah, the exact, the exact amounts for the chart on page nine.
Yes.
Okay, that's in our, our this year's budget somewhere?
On your, on the cultural funding page, it shows the actuals that have come in within the budget document.
Okay, perfect. So I will look, and for, for the last five years.
Over the same time period on this graph?
Perfect, okay, so I will take a look at that. And so in my memory, I think in, I think in 2017, 2018, we spent a million on historic preservation that year. Is that about right? And again, I can, I can come up with this. I think it was only in last year's budget that we spent that full 15%.
Yes, and last year, we brought forth projects that allocated, well, last year in FY '19, this year, 11 point, 11.1 million in expenditures.
So 2018, we did the full 15% allocation eventually because we did a budget amendment. 2019, same. In fiscal year 2017, that was the year that we were able to do, that we first made this shift and we did about a million, as I recall. We didn't do full 15. Anyway, I can, I can figure that out, but I'm just trying, again, I'm, I'm trying to get clear on, you know, had we been doing the 15% all along, what would that have amounted to, just for my own reference? I think as we look at the projects that are coming forward on September 19th, it would be great to have a recap of the projects we've been able to fund over the last couple of years because I know Oakwood was one and I'm unclear on some of the other. I mean, I have all of this somewhere, but I think it would just be good to get a sense of where we have made those allocations to city facilities. I know the NAMU museum benefited and others in my district and so it would just be good to get a picture of that. And then my last question is on page eight. So these are the projected balances once we get to this place next year.
Correct.
Where are we currently? Where would I find what those balances are currently?
Again, it's a moving target because we continue to collect more than we've estimated. Certainly, we had a projected ending balance in FY, for FY '19. I can get you that information.
Great, and have we, are we, have we exceeded it? Have we exceeded our estimates?
Yes, we have, you know, one more month to go in the year certainly. And so, but yes, we are ahead of budget for FY '19.
And so I know you were talking, you talked about how we use the ending balances in here. So the expansion, the expansion funds originated in hotel occupancy tax dollars?
So that, that amount represents the additional two cents that council just passed.
Oh, this is the new part?
That we will start collecting, correct.
So how much then, so does that mean there is currently not any in the? I thought that the convention center had some cash reserves.
So the cash reserves you're speaking of will be in that top line of Austin Convention Center? That's, yes, that's the, our portion of the seven cents. Because state law requires that that additional two cents that you just approved can only be spent for expansion, we will keep it in a separate line.
I see, okay, so do you know, do you have any ballpark sense of where we are in terms of the Austin Convention Center's current ending balance?
I don't have
Or is that what you said you meant?
Yes, I'll get that for you.
And would you mind reminding me the venue project fund?
That was for the voter-approved project that was the north side of the convention center expansion in 2002 and a portion of the Waller Creek Tunnel.
And that also, it's, we can assume that that also has some of that 54.8 million that it's projected to have as an ending balance next year currently exists?
Yes, the majority of it does.
The majority of that exists?
Yes.
And how can that be spent?
That can be only spent on debt service, operations, or capital improvement projects within that defined venue.
Which, as you said, is the northern part of the convention center expansion plus
Yes, the voters-approved $25 million worth of debt for the Waller Creek Tunnel. So that portion of the venue has already been fully funded and expended. So the remaining amount collected within that venue goes towards the debt service that was related to the expansion and then the operations and capital improvement projects related to, again, only that portion of the building.
And when do you expect that portion to be, when do you expect that that portion will be paid?
It is scheduled to be paid off in 2029. I understand as part of the financing analysis for expansion, council is interested on when we could pay that off if sooner. Given, you know, what's transpired in terms of changes in allocation and changes in even project scope and construction costs, what we presented as a framework four years ago has, has changed quite a bit. So we are continuing to work on that. We've, I think, communicated to council, we can bring an update of that financing plan to council by the end of the year. So we should have a little bit more information and better informed. It won't be a complete answer because again, one of the biggest components of the expansion project that has yet to be fully determined is the site assembly, how we will put, you know, together the, the development project in terms of land acquisition as well. So that is a key component to being able to predict how soon we can pay that debt off.
And so the 54.8, thank you for that. And so the 54.8 is earmarked and has to be spent because of our bond covenants on the repayment of the debt. So as we have conversations about how quickly we can repay the debt so that that venue, that two-cent venue would be available for, say, Travis County use, that's, this is exactly the fund we're talking about right here.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then the convention center expansion, next line, I'm sorry, I know you explained this to me, but I want to be clear. This is, these are hotel occupancy taxes that have been put in reserves for a potential upcoming expansion?
That represents the amount that we expect to collect during fiscal year 2020 as a result of the two cents.
Okay, I apologize. And the Austin Convention Center, first line, are there any debt covenants that dictate how that money is spent?
So that portion of our hotel occupancy tax is pledged to the debt as well. So yes, there are debt bond covenants that, that outline how it can be spent. It is, it is the funding that is used for the majority of the operations of the convention center as well.
Okay, so all of that, all of it is pledged to the debt?
Yes.
Other than the operations?
All, all of the hotel tax that is allocated to the convention center is pledged to the debt.
What does that mean exactly? Does that mean if there is another non-convention center purpose, can it be used for that or no?
Again, it would depend on the bond covenants and the flow of funds. What that, what that means when you pledge that source of funding to the debt, the very first thing that has to be paid from that source of funding is the debt. And then typically within, or always within a bond document, there is a flow of funds that then dictates how the remaining portion of that funding after debt service is to be prioritized and used.
Thank you, and I'm sorry you've explained, you've done very useful presentations about this in the past. It's just been long enough that I had, I'm a little fuzzy on, on that. But, but it does mean then that if, if, within that 44.9, between the venue project But, but it does mean then that if, if, within that 44.9, between the venue project fund and that first Convention Center fund, you could meet the debt fund obligations and anything underneath it, and there could still, I mean, it's not suggesting that there might not be other opportunities we could put that money to. It would just have to go through that. It's like, you have to pay your rent first-
Correct.
And then your food, and then your, and it just kind of goes through that same kind of hierarchy?
Correct.
Okay.
And so I will just say, again, from the Convention Center standpoint, this almost isn't uncommitted cash in our mind because we have been strategic about planning for expansion. So anything that council would decide to do outside of using it for those purposes would obviously impact our financial model for expansion, so we'll just have to work through all of that if that actually transpires.
Okay, so if there were an acquisition or something that would support, of land that would support the general Palm District Master Plan or Convention Center, it's, it could potentially come from one of these funds if it were legally eligible, but it would have to, it would have to not jeopardize the flow of funds required by our bond covenants.
I would say it could potentially come from the first line, or the third line if it were directly related to expansion of the Convention Center.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks very much for that explanation.
On slide 12, where it's doing the four-year projections for the Historic Fund, that excludes the new two perc, two cents, right?
Exactly.
So that doesn't include-
Not yet.
The two cent, that's what I thought. On the projects list for Historic, I had also been asking for a full list, and thankfully I had an opportunity to meet with some of the staff for this program yesterday, and was really glad to hear that there had been extra effort put into identifying projects in East Austin and in, in other underserved communities, and that was responsible for some of the delay. You know, the types of facilities where the folks in charge have access to the halls of power were certainly the first ones to show up, but I'm glad to know that we are prioritizing equity as we build that list before it comes to council with those decisions. So thank you for doing that. And I, and I would just reiterate what we all did at that prior council meeting, where, you know, I think we all wanna see the 334 spent down and, and open up that opportunity. And I would hate to, to mess too much with the, the capital fund ending balances until we have a pretty clear vision of that in relationship to our hopeful, good partners.
I don't know who, maybe Mr. Danny, you know, when we get a forecast of percentage increase in funds like at mid-year, I remember that this fund was expected to be pretty flat or to be flat. Looking at this now, would you, how would you describe the hotel occupancy revenue coming in? As flat or increased, or below?
I mean, it's, it's a revenue source that we always, like almost every revenue source, we try to project it conservatively. When you think about things like cultural arts and historic preservation, we don't wanna say, hey, we think we're gonna have 12 million, turns out we only have 11 million, who's gonna take that million-dollar cut? We never wanna be in that situation. So almost always, we're gonna end up seeing more revenues come in than what we forecasted. And certainly this year is the same. I think we might've projected 1% growth in our hotel taxes this year, or we're maybe trending more like around three. As we look to fiscal year 20, I, I think we're again projecting just a 1% growth, you know. It'd be great if we continued to see the growth in hotel rooms that we have seen, but we certainly have started to see that growth rate level out. And so, am I right on that, Carla? 1% growth is what we're projecting for the future years conservatively?
I believe that we are projecting 1% over our current year estimate, which is higher than budget, so I don't remember the calculation of the percentage growth from fiscal 19 budget to fiscal 20, but it is 1% above our fiscal year 19 estimate. I believe in our forecast, in years 22, 23, and 24, we are looking at a 3% growth rate right now. We would continue to adjust that accordingly based on our actuals and the trends.
I think that's good information, and maybe that, you could add that to the list of additional information that other council members have asked for.
Sure.
Those of us who are asking for specifics, of course, you'll share it with everybody.
Yes.
Great. Looking on slide 10, we've shown really remarkable growth in real numbers of cultural contracts. So I was curious, and this could be another piece that you come back to us, either through this verbal Q and A or a written Q and A. I'd like to know the average amount of the contracts and the age of the contracts. I know some folks have been receiving cultural contracts for a really long time. I was on the Arts Commission back in the 90s, and I remember struggling with a budget for contracts that was like a million dollars. And we're way beyond that now, which is in part of why we have so many more people requesting access to the program, but we're also a much bigger city, so naturally there would be a much larger growth in our creative community, looking for both the hand-up to begin and also the, the funding to continue. And so I think that's really important, that's a really important aspect of our cultural contracts program, the maturity of the program, which I expect, fully expect that our heritage preservation contracts will get, the historic preservation contracts will get to that place too when that, because that program is so new. So the average amount of the contract, and then the age of the contracts, and I know there are categories of, the, the funding process is also a lot more complex than when I was learning the ropes probably 30 years ago. So I think that would be helpful to get us apprised of how that's working now. I'm hoping that the disruption that we had in the cultural contracts programming, allocations last year, isn't gonna happen again this year.
No, all, we're in the second year of the two-year biennium, and contracts are leveled.
So all's quiet on that front?
Yes, and we're having conversations with the community on how we move forward, and we will be bringing those recommendations back.
That's great.
Yes.
That's great. I like it when folks can spend their creative energies on, on performances and producing things rather than on trying to figure out how the city is changing its process and where they end up in the maze. There's one line item here that I'm looking at on slide five with cultural arts, and we've talked about this, our city manager stepped out. We talked about this during our budget allocations last year, and also when we were talking about Historic Preservation Funds, where the money for the overhead, the staffing, comes from. And I believe it was direction from the dais that we separate out the EDD staff salaries from the cultural contracts allocation, and rather, and instead of reducing the amount to cultural contracts, which go out into the community through this process here with the 623 different contracts, that that money instead be taken out of just regular hotel occupancy revenue, like, like the Convention Center staff is paid. And so I don't see that that happened this year, but that was definitely something that we talked about last year during our budget discussions, and also something that I brought up to the city manager to look to, to shift that. And the basis for that shift is the fact that the monies are finite, even though they're much larger than they used to be, but they're still finite. And I would like to see a, a good justification for why the cultural arts staffing comes out of that allocation when it doesn't look like we're doing that with any of the other programs here. Well, Historic Preservation is the only other one that's a 15% budget, but we have a limiter on how much can be in that fund, and I don't, I would prefer to see that 100% of those funds go to cultural contracts, in particular because I, I believe we have funding through hotel occupancy tax revenue to fund the EDD staff. So if you guys could look into that and, and let us know where that stands?
Currently, the staff that manages the cultural arts contracts, they're funded with hotel occupancy tax.
So that's not what this looks like then on, on slide five?
Okay. 15%? Yes. Oh, yes, within our 15%, yes.
Yeah, so, okay, so my point stands, okay, yeah, great. We're paying for city staff out of the cultural contracts 15% bucket.
And then the same is true for Historic Preservation?
Yes.
Well, if we are, it's not, it's not listed on here. It looks like the 15% is going for projects 70, 15, and 15, for the grant program, historic acquisitions, and City of Austin facilities and sites. It doesn't say EDD staff.
We need to make that correction because we are paying staff from that, from the 15%.
So that goes to the conversation that we had last year, and I'm pretty sure that the direction that came from the four of us that met with the city manager in the run-up to crafting the 15% bucket was a couple-fold. One of them was that it, the, any unexpended balance would roll over into the next year.
I don't recall this conversation, that's why I was making-
So, the, the run-up that I'm talking about is a conversation that four of us on council had with the city manager.
Oh.
The city manager isn't here right now, but he can, he's hearing what we're saying.
Got it, okay.
So the expectation was there would be a rollover of the unexpended balance, and then also that staffing would be funded from hotel occupancy revenues, not from the 15% bucket. Now, if there's a compelling reason to do that, please tell us. What caught my eye was the fact that it looked like it was only funded out of cultural arts, and I specifically talked with the city manager about that last year, about shifting that. Now we know that, that EDD staff working on Historic Preservation is also being funded out of that 15%. Again, I don't think that was our intention, those of us who met with the city manager in the run-up to this discussion. So let's get some clarity around that.
We can get that.
I don't know how much or how little that, that's going to be. I don't know how big the staff is, so I don't know what the dollar figure is, so let us know what that is. I imagine it's maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe?
Just shy of that.
Yeah, I don't think it's massive, but in the grand scheme of things, when you have a cap on how much can go to cultural arts and historic preservation, I would rather those be directly to those programs because we can fund the staff as well. And I think, and then you clarified that the new 2% was not in these, the four-year projections or the projections that are on pages four and five, right? Because I was trying to add up, it should be up to 15 million. We have 11.9 and a new 3.1?
Yes.
So with the lag that you're talking about, Carla, you expect to see these numbers on 12 jump up, let's see, fiscal 2021, so it should be at a minimum, using your projections, then that, we would add 3.1 million to each of these?
That-
With the additional projection of increased growth up to 3% on top of that?
Correct.
Okay. That would be useful to see because these look really flat, and on the other, on the other side, we're talking about a fairly large increase in real dollars, but we don't see it reflected anywhere. Okay, thank you.
Allison.
Thank you, I'll try and be quick. So the, the detail on page five for the new 2%, that is not being collected yet because they still have to go through the process of adding it into their systems at the hotels. That will start being collected in a couple months, and then we will have a collection for the year, and you're anticipating a mid-year budget amendment that would deal with those funds, is that, what's happening?
The transfer, to appropriate for the transfer of this 3.1, that's actually going to be part of the staff amendment that you consider during budget adoption, not mid-year.
Okay, so that will be in, so we will be capturing that. And then, is my understanding that for cultural arts, for the cultural arts grants, they were short a certain amount of money to do what they wanted to do? Will this then help resolve that shortage?
So for FY '20, the contracts are level as they were in FY19. We're now going through a process on how we move forward considering the growth, and we will factor all of that in when we bring back recommendations. Right now, we've met with the working group and been able to level set all contracts.
Great, I'm glad to hear that. And then, I know this is not necessarily part of our budget process, I'm not sure what the appropriate way to do this is, but I would really love to give some direction to go talk to the hotels as we are going to be imposing a new 2% tax, that maybe they should put their 2% T-PIT in place at the same time so they don't have to do this twice, and that that money should begin to flow to help us with our homelessness issue right now. I don't know if we can try to jumpstart some of those conversations since we have put some skin in the game to initiate the additional 2%, that it would be very reasonable for our staff to go and ask them to do the same. Obviously, we still have to do a lot of economic and financial analysis, but I think that would be very good faith effort on their part, and I know that they're concerned about the challenges that we're facing. They had talked about a 1%, but I really think it should be 2%, and it would seem to make a lot of financial sense to just make one change to the taxes rather than have to go through it twice in one year.
We have had three stakeholder meetings, I believe, since council passed the resolution in May with the hotel community and then the homeless service providers as well. Those conversations are ongoing. Behind the scenes, we are working on drafting the documentation that council would need to approve to move that forward, and I believe everybody is eyeing a November timeframe to bring that to council.
Okay, great, and I really hope that they will consider jumping right to the 2%. It's still a very small amount of money that would be flowing to help with the challenges that we have, but I think it's important that everyone in the community steps up, particularly with the revenue caps, to help us, and this is one way that the hotel industry community can do that.
I will pass that along.
Jimmy, and then Kathy.
So I think it's important to remind the public that, that T-PIT is, it requires the consent of the hotels, so it is a negotiation and a conversation with them. I don't think there's any T-PIT in Texas that is engaged in a broader conversation in the way that ours will be engaged, so I think that's, that's something that's really good, and I think the, the industry is stepping up in a way that the industry is not stepping up in other communities, and I think that's pretty good. We should always keep asking for more, there's no reason we can't, but, but I also wanna make sure the public understands, sometimes there are folks, I've seen, you know, promoted posts on Facebook and such, that, that demand, does the city require them to do things? That's just not how the state law works on that, on that question. I also, I think it's important to note that I'm uncomfortable with things being said that they were direction from the dais when it was four council members in a private meeting. I'm generally uncomfortable with direction from the dais as a tool. I have found myself in situations where I did not agree with direction, it was not attached to a resolution, it was not amended language, it was not the type of thing where our process allowed me to amend direction, statements are read from the dais, I don't think it's a good way to run a council manager form of government. So I, I, I think, I think we would all agree that no one wants four of us in private meetings with the city manager dictating policy, because that would go wrong on a lot of fronts for a lot of us and a lot of questions. So I would just really ask that we be very careful about how we communicate those types of moments to ourselves and to the public.
Kathy.
Thank you, I think that's an important point, and I agree with you. I do think, I think that we need to look back at our resolution that did pass council for a description of that, and it may be that we need to add some clarity around the allocations of those 15% and 15%. That's where I think things may have gone haywire with regard to that point, with regard to the point council member Paul brought up. Page five, I wanted to ask a clarifying question, and I think you've answered at least one, sorry. The middle light blue column is the amount we can anticipate receiving because of the action we took.
In August, earlier this month, yes.
Seems like four months ago at this point. So 15% brings us to 3.1, 3.1. How is the 9.9 million, what is, what is the formula that's generating 9.9 million and resulting in that allocation for Visit Austin?
So- So, um, when council made the, um, change in the allocation and, um, fully funded historic preservation, um, we attempted to find ways within the Convention Center budget to, um, keep Visit Austin whole within their budget. So, um, to come up with, um, the amount, we first look at, um, what Visit Austin is, um, budgeting for convention sales and services directly, because that is directly tied to the operations of our facility. So, um, we take that amount and we fund it, um, with, within our operations, um, line item of our budget. To come up with the additional amount that we then transfer, um, from Convention Center into the Tourism and Promotion Fund, we go back and recalculate, um, how much their budget would have been had council not made a change, and, um, we decrease that by $2 million, because at the time of all those conversations, Visit Austin was willing to, kind of, contribute to, um, the, um, funding of historic preservation by giving up about $2 million a year. And then, um, take the amount that we've identified as direct convention sales and services, subtract again the amount that they're getting through their straight allocation, um, from the hotel tax, and, um, the remainder amount in that equation is the amount we budget to transfer to Tourism and Promotion to supplement their budget.
So as I, I guess, you know, when we were having this conversation a couple weeks ago, we talked about, you know, this was, um, we didn't, there is not a standard allocation that we have voted on that results in this 9.9 million.
Correct.
So this is what the staff are proposing for this next year?
Correct.
That of the, of the money that we all voted, um, on, that we allocate 9.9 mil, that we allocate 6.2 to cultural arts and historic preservation, those are our maxes, and that we take the remaining, this portion of the remaining funds and allocate it to Visit Austin.
Yes, and if you look at page four, this isn't as a result of the increase in the hotel tax, this is what is automatically flowing, um, from our allocation of the seven cents. So, this isn't as a result of the change council made in, um, earlier this month, um, this is just showing that Visit Austin gets supplemental funding for their budget from the Convention Center now, not, um, directly from the hotel tax allocation.
Okay, I see. So the hotel tax allocation goes to the Convention Center and the Convention Cent, this is part of the portion that the Convention Center reallocates to Visit Austin?
Correct.
And I guess I would just want to be very clear, because as we have these conversations, I think it's really important to note, I mean, every year, Visit Austin proposes a budget, and we have an opportunity in our discretion to approve it or to make changes. We've always had the ability to do 15% for historic preservation. When we made that change, it's not about making people whole, I mean, I, I guess, I appreciate and I understand why you've used that term, but in my mind, it also happened at a time where our hotel occupancy taxes were increasing and increasing, and we made a different determination that year and subsequent years about how we were going to allocate that funding, which we have the discretion to do. So, you know, I think we all, I would just, I would just say that I think that's part of why for so many years during these conversations, there was a reluctance to make any changes to the hotel occupancy tax, because it was expressed as, you know, we were defunding Visit Austin or defunding somebody else, and that's just not, that's really, I think, um, an unfortunate kind of framing. I'm not, again, I don't mean, I'm not saying this in a critical way, I just want to be clear that I, I regard the 9.9 million as something we should discuss about whether that goes, whether that is, um, the, the portion or not that goes to Visit Austin. And I think as, I appreciate that there wasn't as much funding going to Visit Austin because we made what was in our statutory ability to do, a, a larger commitment to historic preservation, but the, the overall funding, it's my understanding, the overall funding to Visit Austin has continued to increase. I mean, so it was continuing to increase, it just didn't increase at the same rate because we made an allocate, we made an additional allocation. Is that, I would, accurate? I would agree with that, yes. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else? Is your light still on? All right? Thank you very much. I think those are all, no, we have two more-
Just high-level.
High-level things to touch base on? Ed?